And some came in there.
So I can make them up?
Yeah, I'm looking to.
Accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Moving on to the policy number four, or item number four, which is first reading of three new policies. I know we don't have Steve or Bridget here.
No. So you're gonna walk it through?
Yes.
Okay. So, a couple things. First, before we start policy discussion, something I noticed today going through some of this stuff. I'm in general, I think some of our policies have inconsistent terms whether or not we're the Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools or Montpelier Roxbury School District. I think we'll need to make this more consistent as we're adopting these that we are one or the other. But I don't think, you know, Brian Grant or somebody else could chip in there on which one is what we need to have in there. But we have been inconsistent so far like whether or not we're Montpelier Roxbury School District, Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools in the policies.
Okay.
For us to keep an eye on.
When did we decide in the beginning that it was Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools?
Yeah, but we're somehow legally required to be.
Call ourselves.
Montpelier Roxbury Student District, like in our.
Yeah, so in like official documents.
In official documents.
I think some of the stuff Grant's been doing, I feel like I overheard Grant telling somebody that.
Well, Grant and I had a conversation about it at the board retreat. Because there is this legal requirement that in some contexts we have to be referred to as MRSD. But we had had a board conversation previously in which, and I think we voted, I think we took an action that we want to call ourselves publicly, Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools.
Yeah, we did.
So we, we kind of go along with the two name system. So maybe it is a question for Brian as to whether it matters which name we use in the policy adoption. I doubt it.
It would be good to know the answer to that though, because yeah, legally it would be good to know.
Legally.
And then whatever that answer is, we put it in the policies. You know, if it doesn't matter, then we call ourselves public schools because that's what we wanna call ourselves. And if we need to go with the school district term, then we do that. And I would say if it matters for some and not for the other, we go with the one that it matters for.
Done and done.
So it's just a general question I had, but no, everything here under item number four is, they're all the prior policies. So everything from the most part has been presented coming from the V S B A model policies, exception of C. But that's first readings.
And give you some context too for C, I had asked, quite candidly with all the work that's been going on, forgotten that I'd asked the tech committee to come up with something as one of their goals for this year. And so it just timed out that Mike Martin was able to present that to me just before. And so I'd given Bridget a heads up about that. So what you see for letter C is homegrown from the tech committee here in Montpelier Public Schools.
One thing I noticed about that is under the second section policy, the educational mission, it refers to, I believe, MPS, Educational Mission. And I'm not sure if, you know, it's.
Yep. We can make that change.
I, I'm, we don't have, I don't know if we have one yet.
Right. No, that's right, that's right.
We could just have the MPS one as a placeholder until we have.
Right. Until it's.
Do you want to go down?
Well, maybe just even, I was gonna say suppose you just cut out the words educational mission and said it is a policy of the district to provide robust and reliable I T resources in order to meet its student.
You could just say in order to meet its educational mission, period, and leave off the specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's, I think.
Can we review these in order, actually?
Yeah.
Student attendance, pupil privacy.
And could you tell me, the second sentence on the student attendance policy begins legal pupils between the ages of six and sixteen. Defines, define legal how? I don't think we do, we've heard of the students as legal pupils. So why is that different there?
Let's see if there's a reference to that. I was gonna say it would have to do with residency, but then residency is stated later in the policy.
Like I said, when I read that, I found it kind of confusing on what classifies illegal pupil. You know, it's not residence, that's the rest of the statement.
Compared, compared to illegal ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if, well. I wonder if that's what it's referring to. I can, I can ask.
Yeah, that's really uncomfortable.
That is the only question, comment that I had on that policy. And as a sole policy committee person in attendance tonight, the policy committee, the three policies that we're looking at right now has not gone through. So I can't present anything to you based on feedback from the rest of the committee for these policies, so.
The committee hasn't.
The committee has.
Committee hasn't discussed these three policies.
And do we know how much latitude we have to make changes other than things like names and references to specific mission? Some are likely to change more than others.
I think some of that stuff is coming up later. I think Brian had dropped off something here. But I think from what I understand from conversations with Lori in the past, is we can add things to required policies, but it's, we'd be really getting a can of worms if we start taking things out of pol- the required policies. And the V S B A's work with legal counsel, everything that is in the model policies coming from V S B A should be there for the district to comply with federal and state law. So adding is reasonable, tweaking is reasonable, but pulling things out is gonna take some legal counsel to verify that it is okay and likely not.
I don't see anything in these policies I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I don't either.
There's some typos in the pupil privacy rights policy that needed to get fixed up, so.
Is that the, is it not referred to as F R P A anymore? It's now P P R A?
Uh, it says reference twenty U S C twelve, let's see if I can pull that one up.
I don't know.
Yeah, I assume that V S B A would get that right, but just for my information.
I mean, that's how it's listed here from February two thousand five, Protection of People Rights Amendment, twenty U S C twelve thirty two H.
In number one, it says this policy is required by the federal protection of people rights.
It's the people's privacy.
Jim. Ten minute question.
Under the pupil privacy rights number six.
Yes.
Under what scenario do folks envision collecting or disclosing or use of personal information collected from students for the purposes of marketing or selling that information? Why would we ever do that? I mean, I'm not saying no to it, I'm just asking like what possible, what would that entail?
Same question.
So it, it is still called the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act. I don't know.
Is that like that consent that comes home annually where you sign up whether or not your child can be used in, photograph can be used in
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Marketing materials.
Yeah.
And you say yes or no?
We may just wanna take that reference.
What, what about, are we talking about the same question?
Number six.
Yeah, but what about selling that, I'm talking about selling that information.
So.
Ah.
Who we s- why, what, I'm just, I just honestly asking for an example of where we would sell student information.
It's like the last policy conversation we had at Roxbury where there was a question as to why there were four exemptions to the firearm statute. This is in federal law, literally listed as such. The collection, disclosure, or use of personal information, I mean, this is word for word, number six is word for word, if you look at the footnote on reference number nine.
I understand.
So it's required to be listed in as such.
But couldn't we just say as our policy that we will not be selling the information of students? The district's policy is not to sell information about students. I, I think this could, well, I don't, I'm just asking.
You know, this says that these are, that after we've accepted these, you have to write procedures.
I understand.
Our procedure could be, we will not sell any information to.
Yeah, I mean.
Here's a situation in which that could come up, that they have the kids use software all the time, right? And a lot of it's like online software, and they're using tons of different programs. And some of those programs do collect their information, like how they perform in this game or whatever.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, but, but we have, we have to make sure anytime that we're having kids engage in those things, that if it is collecting information from them, it's not collecting their information.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Where, where would we sell kids' information? I mean, I.
Do, it's, the question is whether any of those companies potentially make money from the data that they collect on student use of their.
Yeah, a lot gets, a lot gets sold and packaged these days in oddwares and other potential.
Well, you could just imagine that a parent who's watching this or reading this online, then all of a sudden reads that we're selling, that we're acknowledging that we're gonna have to write a regulation that, to allow the district to sell information about their kids. We have to be able to defend that, articulate why it's important.
Well, I, I think we defend it because it's what federal law tells us.
It tells us we have to allow the selling of.
It doesn't say anything about allowing the selling, it's just saying that in case it happens.
It doesn't say anything about allowing.
Yes, that's right. And we could have a policy saying, our policy is we don't allow the selling of kids' information.
Right.
That might, that might want, get us into a situation where we're not able to use software that teachers want to be able to use.
Okay, well then that's a good justification, just trying to flesh it out there, I'm not just voting on something, it's just a footnote.
You might also, Peter, look at the under responsible technology use. If you look at the second page in another policy.
The other policy.
Mm-hmm.
I was reading two and three at the bottom, read those in relation to this, just because Michelle used that for an example.
Well, we, I mean, we've actually had questions about it from parents in the past about how, because we use Google Classroom, you know, they want to know how, what access does Google have to identifying information about their child? And, and Google Classroom, because it's created for classroom use, is structured so that they don't have access to identifying information. But, you know, Google, right? Any information that they can get in the process of people using their stuff, they're gonna do stuff with. But we have to make sure that it's not identifying the students.
My last comment, one of the reasons this is coming up as a concern for me is we have a federal, a, a U S Secretary of Education, who I'm not always convinced is looking out for students, right?
Oh, yeah.
Betsy DeVos has done things that I think are
Agreed.
Not above board. And so just because there's a regulation in the federal law, it doesn't mean we should maybe just check off on it. But thank you for listening, hear me out.
Well, I mean, I think there, I think we do wanna be careful in general though when we deviate from language that's straight out of the statute. Because sometimes we might think that we're complying with it or think that we're even strengthening it, but you know, it can confuse future boards. It can also perhaps unintentionally pose out of compliance if we don't do it right.
At, at least with the required policies.
Yeah.
The, if there are other recommended ones that this board chooses to take on, or certainly if there are policies that this board wants to consider that, that are not required, I, I think that's where you have a lot of room for flexibility and tailoring. But I think your point is well taken.
So maybe this is one, it's an interesting thing now that we're a new district. What will be the process for procedures? It's not, it's not generally something, you know, the administration does procedures, the board doesn't do procedures. But maybe, I'm thinking of what Peter asked, so maybe we need, we need to ask to see the procedures from things we're worried about that would be handled in procedures.
Well, I think we certainly need to flag them and ask questions. I think we should maybe be selective about it though, because if we get stacks like.
Right, that's what I mean, they don't normally see all the procedures, but maybe it's worth, if it's something we're worried about, worth checking out.
Yeah, and the procedure on number six can be that we're just not gonna do it. Sure.
Right, and the easy one then, before we get off of this policy, number three needs to be reworded to be correct. Arrangements of protect student privacy is not appropriate.
To protect, yeah.
Yeah.
Minor details there.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
So process, why is this supposed to be made and then go back to it?
It will, yes. It has to anyway, but this is only the first reading. I'm curious, maybe again for a consistency question. So this policy only referred to parents, not guardians most of the time, if I remember correctly in the reading. Is that consistent with most of the policies, that language regarding parents, guardians? Did anybody else catch that, did it read?
Yeah, no, I'm catching it too. Also, there's, under all statutes, do parents and guardians have the same rights?
Yeah, 'cause like, number four is one that caught my attention, the right of a parent to inspect any instructional material.
That's number one as well, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, educational records says parents, guardians.
I think we should have parents, guardians to be stood. Possible unless it's a legal reason or not, but I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not the lawyer there, but it caught my attention, it seemed like we were using it a little bit differently than we normally do.
Well, alcohol and drugs just says parents, doesn't say guardian.
Well, that sounds like we need to add guardian.
I don't really really understand that question about if the guardians have the same rights as a parent. They don't have the same rights, but.
For these purposes.
For these purposes, maybe we wish to give them those rights.
Well, then can we?
I.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
That's all about.
That goes in your question, can I answer it, please?
So I may get answered, a question I should know the answer to, but in terms of second reading, how much change can occur in the policy committee between the first and second reading before you need to give it a first reading again before it becomes?
All, all the first reading is, is a list that this is the first time it's been out. If there are no changes, it can be warned for adoption at the next meeting, as many readings as you want to get it right.
You can keep changing it forever.
So each reading is a change.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Got it.
But as soon, because we talked about the number, right, is this correct, as soon as we didn't make any changes, then we could adopt the policy?
Correct. There's no required number of readings.
Right.
There's just, it be read and be warned for adoption ten days in advance of the warning.
All right, are we on to responsible continuing?
You ready for?
Thanks, I don't have any more comments or things that I noticed from privacy policy.
So, yes, we are.
So, I don't have, this one, I'll be honest, caught me a little bit off guard this morning when I was reading it. It's different from the V S B A model policy. I think the content is all the same, but the structure has changed some. Quite a bit different than the policy Montpelier had in the books already, and I unfortunately didn't correctly track down ours for Roxbury W S S U to compare it. But I, yeah. Yeah, Mike Martin and the admin team, I'm not sure who else was involved in the first vetting of this policy, had made some changes. I'm assuming everything is okay, but I don't have anything to report back on why or what or how it compares to the model policy straight from V S B A.
So the model policy is essentially a lot of do not, do not, do not, and so this is written in an attempt to express what we hope they would do. So essentially trying to shift the language to be more, this is how we expect that you're going to use our technology responsibly.
The usual policy governance, no, no, no.
Right.
Okay. I didn't really have time to go through in detail both of the policies, the V S B A and this one, but it seemed like the content is all the same, but it was different.
And who did most of the drafting of this?
Um, Mike Martin and the Technology Committee, which includes representatives in all three buildings.
Was it Mike? Okay.
Teachers, tech support specialists, library, tech integrationists.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I remember mentioning that he, they wanted to cast it in a positive light. Any further questions about responsible technologies? Any further discussion on any of the policies up for first reading?
So I'll make sure that all three of these are on for a second reading for the next time we all get together.
Excellent. So moving on to item number five, the second reading of five policies, tobacco provision, education records, student alcohol and drugs, limited English proficiency students, and firearms. Should I go through them one by one with discussion, or?
Do I make a motion?
Todd?
Do we need, is there an object, is we need a motion to discuss?
They're up for discussion.
They're up for discussion, yeah.
I think I'd ask this question at the first reading for tobacco prohibition, is whether or not this applied to marijuana?
It did not apply to marijuana.
It does not.
It does not.
So that would fall under the student alcohol and drugs policy?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that in my head.
No, that's a good, that's a good clarification.
All right, good, thank you.
Is there any needed or plan to change when marijuana becomes legal? I guess it's no, because it's, talk about that. Nah, well, maybe.
For minors.
Eighteen year old seniors.
It's not for minors, but it's.
We do have eighteen, and we have teachers on the grounds as well.
Uh-huh, yeah.
We have teachers on the grounds.
As far as I understand it, there's still no legal protection for having a controlled substance on school property.
Right.
As, unless it's under, you're taking medication. As, and I have not read it, but it's, as I recall, the allowance for marijuana refers to one's personal residence. And so absent more information to the contrary, it is still not going to be legal whether you are, certainly you are not going to be legal as a student. And I would be incredibly surprised if you could legally as an adult bring that onto a school campus.
Okay.
What about?
And this policy specifically talks about students, not adults, so in that case, it's illegal.
We have a separate policy on drug and alcohol in the workplace for students.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm just gonna go one by one and see if you have a comment. Any discussion on tobacco provision beyond becky's?
I'm just gonna say, if we don't have any comment, the next time it can be under adoption of policies, correct?
Yes, in consent agenda.
You just wanna be clear.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm keeping track.
All right, so that can go to adoption.
Wars.
Education records.
I'm good with that.
Great. Student alcohol and drugs. Limited proficiency students. And firearms.
Firearms is where we had all the discussions a lot.
Yeah. And then we could partially resolve that with the statutory requirements. Great, so we don't, we move on to six, we don't have any.
Um, well, there's, this isn't substantive.
Any actions?
Will be warned for adoption.
Yeah.
This isn't substantive, but there's still shall in the firearms one, and I'm not sure. And the implantation, implantation section.
Oh, under expelled, shall be expelled?
Um, I, and then the superintendent shall refer to, and then on the back, the superintendent shall. Are we, we're changing all that to will, is that correct?
I believe we are using will instead of shall, unless.
I'll say that one.
Is that a statutory, cutting based, they have, they have the same meaning.
Fine, but then.
Bridget raised that question last time, didn't she?
Yeah.
And she's not here tonight to have that rationale idled, so.
Well, I mean, is there any harm in pushing it back in other meetings to make sure we have the correct answer?
No.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this policy wouldn't preclude the district from having a shooting club or activities off, off campus?
This is on campus.
Right, it's all on campus.
So.
Well, there's a good question.
Well, campus is usually considered a dog to me, any school activity.
Where the school goes.
So this does say, for example, any student who brings a firearm to school and he possesses a firearm at school.
Right, the thing is definitely on school, what I had wondered, like I think about the school that I grew up in, we had shooting sports clubs that we would leave campus and go after school hours. And I wasn't sure if that would change or be allowed with this policy.
Well, we do, our Nordic team, I think, participated in some, um,
Biathal.
Biathal stuff this winter.
The bioethics.
Maybe we'll, we're checking out legal things, we could check out that.
Yeah.
Just to find out.
No, it's a good question, 'cause if you, if you define campus broadly like that.
Anything that's happening related to this.
Yeah, well, and possess, you know, possess arguably means that they're, have one and they're, possess, yeah. Even if they didn't bring it, and even if it was provided to them as part of an activity.
Yeah, we might wanna just have a section that says if they're participating in a school sponsored event that includes firearms.
Can they, can I put in the spot, Lori? This has to be almost identical to Northfield's policy right now for firearms, right? And they're able to participate in that rifle team. And they're able to participate in that, um, rifle team.
Rifle club, then there's R O T C.
And they do, and so there is some flexibility, or it's-
Rifle teams across the nation. Or people have never asked that question.
Well, I guess the question is like, is there flexibility or people just not?
Following the policy.
Yeah, they already have the type thing where if someone said, you know, we wanna shut down the biathlon team.
It's not.
That's what, that's the question, yeah.
None of these students can, can have guns. They, they might have a pretty good argument that, that they could.
So, yeah, well, shals, wills, and, and clubs off camp, physical campus.
Well, maybe even not anymore.
Yeah, maybe not even a club, just.
Just activity.
Activity.
Yeah.
Approve, board approved activities, would that be board approved?
Well, I hope not, because-
Do we, do we approve activities?
No.
No, you don't.
Okay, so, what, how is a, how does it get approved?
School sponsored, I'd say.
Is school sponsored?
Appropriately, appropriately supervised or something?
School sponsored, okay, that'd be good.
School sponsored.
Yeah. Because if there is a club or a sport, they're required to have an adult, um.
Moderator?
Yeah.
So, if I heard this correctly, tobacco prohibition, education records, student alcohol and drugs, and limited English proficiency students would warrant for adoption on June sixth.
Yes.
We'll add firearms to, as a third reading, along with the second reading for student attendance, pupil privacy, and responsible computer, internet, and network use.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Right.
Okay. We are squared away there.
A few questions.
Thank you all.
Excellent, so we are basically out of schedule. Item six, update on superintendent search, that would be Tina and Lisa. And with Tina, that's actually officially part of your board, for your search committee chair duty, isn't it, to report out, although Lisa, please feel free to.
It is. Absolutely, check on me.
Yeah.
Um, my report is we have a great search committee, it's taking a lot of time and energy on everybody's part, so we really appreciate the search committee. Um, we added another interview day, the interviews will happen on the twenty-first and the twenty-second. And I thought-
Do we need to approve the extra interview day?
I don't know.
Should we just, for?
Sure, I'm getting it.
Bolts and suspenders, okay, is, uh, we had to approve those.
Warned you.
Huh?
It needs to be warned, but do we have to do any approval of?
Cause we had, we had approved, moving it from twelve to thirteen and some other change, yeah.
And we did originally approve the dates.
And that was because of-
Huh?
I think we did originally approve the meeting dates.
Yeah, let's do it, just to do it, make sure, so. So, is that an indication that we have candidates that we like?
It's an indication that we have a lot of people to look at.
Okay, good, well, that's better than.
A lot of people made it through the screening tool.
Yes.
Um, so, while you're talking about approvals, we have two sets of minutes, which leaves a nicely.
Three sets, I believe.
Three sets, oh, you're right. Three sets of minutes that, that need board approval.
Okay.
And-
There's not much to them.
Right.
Because most of our time is spent in executive session.
But, they're later. Um, and, uh, speaking of, uh,
Can, can you-
maybe warnings, go ahead.
I was gonna say, can you approve the meetings, since they were?
No, they would have to be, who, who has those minutes?
We all have.
Heather brought copies for everybody tonight.
If the search committee is approving them as you go, does the board need to approve those?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, you, right, right.
Committee can approve its own minutes.
Right, because we give, the committee has a charge to operate as entities, so, yeah.
You, you told them to do this, right.
Oh, great, great.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, I thought I'd review, since we have, ha, are having a few extra board meetings, that we would, um, be clarified when those were. So, Tuesday, May twenty-second, we're meeting.
Are we?
I didn't remember that.
Lisa and I have down that, we talked about it, and we were meeting to plan for the June fourth, um, visits by candidates.
And Mike, I think that was something Mike introduced at the meeting when he came and presented to us.
And I-
I had that writ- Yeah. I did, so I had that written down too.
That a number of school board votes were from.
However, there's a high school concert that evening.
I know, we talked about it, there are people on this committee on the high school concert.
Seven o'clock on the twenty-second, the logistics board.
Yeah.
So, the-
Fourth.
And that was on a Tuesday night.
I, it occurred to me that we, I think it was Bridget last time, that was saying, could we please clarify when we're having meetings?
Mm-hmm.
And this did not come up, I don't think.
Yeah, I, if the twenty-second meeting came up, it, this has escaped me, but I, I would, it makes sense.
Oh.
Well, if, I guess I'm saying, if not on the twenty-second, when would you do it before June fourth? I don't know, we could.
And the other thing about that is, we talked with Mike, um, and he's, he can be there that night.
He can be there on the twenty-second.
And he said that the screening committee will actually, um, have a general outline for us for what the fourth would look like, and so.
Okay.
We're deeming that it's very short meeting, but.
Yes, we expect to be relatively short, but, um, and that we wouldn't necessarily be doing all of the legwork, just that we would be kinda taking a look and maybe delegating different folks to be different places and figuring out when the interviews can happen and.
Yeah. And the idea on the twenty-second being that the screening committee would be there and you could just kind of flow one to the other, at least.
Oh, well, on the twenty-second, we're meeting all day, so, but-
Well, we, it doesn't have to be that day that the board meets, it could be the next day.
Right, but the board, as a matter of fact, we discussed we had to be done by seven o'clock if the board was meeting, 'cause that was our understanding.
Yeah.
But it would have to be done sometime to be ready for June fourth. So, what's the board, what's the board's pleasure again?
How long, I'm gonna take a second.
Pardon?
I'm good with the twenty-second.
I'm good with the twenty-second, the, I could do the twenty-third as well, I could, that week is actually pretty good for me, the following week, that's good.
It's, it's, as Michelle pointed out, that's a deadly week for any parent of a child. Not only is it the high school concert, the next day's the art show, which you just got a little card for.
Yes.
Um.
Which is happening, that's a, yeah.
It's too bad, I guess we don't know yet how late, um, it will actually be necessary for us to go. Because would it help if it's a very short meeting to make it early?
Doesn't work for me, especially.
I'm not sure we can because of our interviews.
Well, that's what I was saying, we don't know what, exactly what's happening, but.
Right. What time is the concert?
I'm just trying to find that out. I have it in my calendar at six, at six o'clock, but I don't know that that's real.
Uh-huh.
I have it written down, but no.
But no time.
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
And the art show is at six thirty.
Yeah, I'm the ones to, it's, we could meet at five thirty or six, I'm the ones to, we still make the art show.
Uh-huh.
I'm not sure where, if, if this bu, whole building will be, sort of the way.
No, it's in the gym.
No, it's in the gym.
Oh, it's not, oh, okay, then we'll see about that.
Yeah.
It's quite the show you should come.
So, we could use this space.
Yes.
Um.
And then go see the art show.
Well, the, the question would be, we could ask Mike if he could come, or he could get us ready, so Lisa and I could do it.
This place. Right, right.
So, and I guess Mike's preference would be for the twenty-second to so, he does have to make that's your trip.
Somehow, I thought that came out in the discussion, and the board picked it, but I can't imagine why we would.
We did on that first night when a couple people were absent.
The very first, you know, or spring break.
When we didn't know anything was happening.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, maybe we should check with availability of people, if we did it on Wednesday before the art show, how's that strike the rest of the people on board?
What time are we setting? Five?
I-
Six.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, it won't take that long, will it?
I think, Tina, I remember we were talking with Mike, and he said something about, um, not expecting it to be too short either, do you know what I mean? So, I think maybe an hour is probably a good cushion.
He was thinking about your discussion of what we'll have to say, and how long you would discuss it, I think. Um, so if it was five thirty, do you mean?
Make something happen.
That's an hour.
Hopefully, it wouldn't take more than an hour. I knew it would take a little bit on board.
Well, and you, and you don't have to get to the art show the minute that it starts.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'd take a little more than that.
Right.
It sounds like a concert.
It's flexible.
That's a good point, so.
Yeah.
Actually, in my, if I'm thinking, Ryan, how about six instead of five, is that better? Not mine.
Just say, it's gonna be some shuffling of the schedule, and there's a chance kids will be in tow, but figure something out.
They'll like the art show.
They do like Michelle.
No.
It's just it's dinner time.
Um, because Michelle's right, the art show is not like a concert, so, sooner.
Right.
Although there is a concert during the art show.
That is true, but it's unlikely will be at six thirty.
So, we're gonna check with Mike for the Wednesday, confirm that he can come, and then move forward with that, is that what we're saying?
Well, I think it's the pleasure of the board, 'cause I'm betting we will have what we're doing done with by then, so probably if he can't come, Lisa and I can present it, is that your thought?
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, sure. Can anyone not attend on Wednesday? Could do that. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, Bridget's gonna be back in town, right? I don't know, s, still don't think Steve is gonna be back in town.
He's hoping he's out of town for two weeks, and it's, so, will be a-
Yeah.
So, it'll matter which of those days he's not gonna be.
Yeah.
Though I can't say for sure though, if it's a monster when he actually left.
Depends whether this is week one or week two.
Right, I actually don't know which week he left, so.
It's week one, he, he was at the farmer's market on Saturday.
So, it's not gonna be regardless, yeah. Okay.
I'm good with the twenty-third, at six.
Yeah, it's okay.
Twenty-third, uh, six.
The, um, the con, the spring, it was said Tuesday, not, uh, Wednesday, by the way, Michelle.
Right, but we were, we began by discussing Tuesday, that's why it came out.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
And the, I, the, um, jazz band plays during the art show.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
It's not exactly a concert, but it's live music.
It's, and it's pretty nice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that we're clear, so that's a board meeting on the twenty-third, and then there'll be a board meeting on, um, June fourth.
Well, yeah, and if we're gonna, how exactly is that envisioned to work, uh, that's gonna be the, the kind of-
Right, we have that.
Well, that's what we're talking about on the twenty-third.
Yeah, that's gonna be, gonna get a-
Yeah, but the, the other issue is that, sure, to some degree you can.
A trailer?
The, the candidates would be here probably for the day.
Yeah.
And culminating in them talking with you, and if there were a couple of them, you'd be here a while, and it's the only thing on the agenda for that evening.
Are we set? Up to three.
Up to three.
Up to three.
Mm-hmm. So, um, I think Mike said that it's likely that each candidate that the screening committee names are finalist would have a liaison who would take them to every school that day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not necessarily a board member, though, I think he's, it could be, it's somebody.
No, yeah, somebody from the screening committee, and that, that would happen prior to coming to the board, so the board does, is not directly given.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. And that would be some community.
And that kind of happens during the day, and then the board convenes at night and meets with the candidates.
And, and how long that would take depends on, on the candidates there.
I feel like a little tennis match for this guy.
Well, and you talked also about having a robust opportunity for public engagement with the candidates, with the finalists.
Yes.
And so, the, there's a question, um, as to whether that would happen prior to the board meeting? Like, would we have a public forum prior to the board meeting, or would that happen as part of the board meeting?
We discussed putting some of that during the day, so that there would be opportunities for the community to meet the candidates during the day.
Okay.
Speaking of-
Um, we could also build in just prior to the board meeting, um, something, but also the board meetings, oh, right?
Right.
Yeah. And-
I was just wondering whether we wanted to create a special time for that and promote it.
Well, I think it was our intention to promote the ones during the day, I think it's your call on whether you feel if we had one or two during the day, would you also want one following more in the evening?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Or at least, I, at least we could kind of, you know, wrap it into what we're doing, maybe have, when, when we talk to the candidates, have part of that time for a little back and forth with whoever shows up.
I guess I would say to you, it, well, it could be, so, it, you know, um, if the community's here, we're gonna ask questions, and the board's going to ask questions,
It's gonna be long. Yes.
Do you wanna separate that in some way?
Yeah, I would, I would have the board part and then a, you know, ten fifteen minutes for interaction with the community members.
Oh, and we have done, I think, before where we ask the public to write their question on an index card and give them, and then the board can ask those questions.
Well, we could do the- That might be good for that part, especially if they have time during the day when they can ask questions directly. And-
How about if I, if we, um, report this back to Mike, and he might have suggestions too, and a good way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. And did he discuss about how the community forums would look, would all candidates be in a room together, so people could come for an hour and hear the different answers, or would it be?
Probably the candidates would be separately.
Separate, so if someone wanted to hear from all of them, they'd have to, they'd have to be in for the long haul.
I think he offered up either of those.
Yeah.
That sometimes it's done where the candidates are all in the same big room, and community teachers, students
Separately.
can all be there and go from one to the next during period of an hour or something like that. And that sometimes it's done where they're separate times, and, or maybe it's separate times, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause-
I guess I've never seen it done all together, but it doesn't mean it couldn't be.
Seems just a-
Yeah, I mean, for the candidate's perspective, they probably would not want to be all together, but from the public's perspective.
It's convenient.
Right.
It's, it's a lot more convenient.
Right.
And then you get some people who saw one person, but not the other two, and I know they wouldn't love it, but.
Yeah, that would certainly seem uncomfortable for the candidate.
Let's, let's, let's ask Mike, um, how he feels it's best, knowing, he, he is aware that we're very concerned
Yeah, ask my, ask Mike.
about the community being able to give input into this, and we have discussed it, so, um, let's talk about that.
Yeah. Or we could do a thing where we're pretty disciplined about, it's gonna be an hour, and one person's gonna come up in twenty minutes, and then you pick your cane and
Uh-huh.
And twenty minutes, and then, you know, and really have like, so, you can see all three in an hour, and it'll be a dependable hour, but
I think that's a very good one.
they won't be all sitting there together.
I wouldn't recommend a twenty minute conversation. I, I think you're, yeah, I, I'm, I think you're gonna want more than twenty minutes.
It's just-
Uh-huh.
It's what you're sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big time.
I mean, you know, you could-
Well, that's what concerned us about doing both public and board questions.
Well- Yeah.
Um, if the board has a good number of questions, and then you open it to the community, that's not because I wanna cut off the community, I'm just thinking of the length of time. So, you might wanna separate, but the community gets to talk to them, and the board, so then the other thing to think about, and we've been asked to think about it, is how would you get feedback back from the community once they have talked?
Right.
Well, they're always welcome to call or email us.
Well, yeah, well, we could encourage them to call, email, we could also encourage them to.
Oh, do we have to make the decision that tonight?
Write it.
Decision.
You don't have to.
Right, I don't know.
Well, going back to my twenty minute suggestion, I wasn't saying that would be the only opportunity, but I'm saying maybe have, you know, each candidate has an hour, so people who really wanna, you know, dig in, but then have a session where for people who- So, people who really wanna, you know, dig in, but then have a session where for people who don't have three hours to spend and wanna see all three candidates, there's gonna be kind of like a, a quick, you know, twenty minutes each. You can see them all and then they'll each have a separate community meeting too, that'd be longer.
You know, something that I haven't thought of is I wonder if there's a way of videoing. A lot of people watch the board members, the board meetings on.
Orca.
Orca, maybe there's a way of videoing each of them in some specific thing and running it prior to that also. I don't know. How about? The search committee will talk about and get back with you.
Yeah, definitely.
With the plan that, and that's, so that's what we're talking about on the twenty third.
Well, and I. Yeah, I think we do wanna make the decision as quickly as possible, because we do need to hire someone and have them start just minutes later.
Yes.
Right, but the twenty third is next week.
Yes.
You're talking about the hiring decision?
Yeah, I'm talking about the hiring decision.
Yeah.
Well, you can hire that night.
Right. Right, but I, if, if I was just starting, I was starting down the road of envisioning a process in which we hear from everybody, the community gets to ask questions, we tell community members, hey, watch the recording on Orca three days from now. Give us your feedback, we're gonna make this decision.
No, 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 this has been so quick already that that can't happen, so.
Yeah.
No, that's not gonna happen.
The fact of the twenty third, then you have a week and a half between there and when the candidates come.
Right, so we should really be prepared, we should really be prepared to have a system which produces a superintendent on the fourth. Which means if we're going to get feedback from the community, we need to set up a way of doing that.
Well, we should, I wonder if we could have, like, the.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm concerned that it's going to get unstructured and unwieldy very quickly. And in hiring, in group hiring processes, it helps if you have a, a list of, say, five questions from which you'll choose three, so that you have a fair understanding and, and equitable treatment of the candidates. And you can do that on the public forum as well. Have the people that are coming forward from the public also be able to choose, say, from a list of five questions, within which three people can ask the question or however it is, otherwise you're really not going to have an equitable interviewing process.
Right, can I follow a little bit on that, thinking, we're talking about the community in very broad terms.
Yeah.
But how likely are we to get the whole community to show up that night?
And we'll have a lot of people.
It's not very likely we're gonna get.
We'll have a lot of people.
But is it the, is it a general representation of the community or is it a subset of the community?
It's parents.
Right, so the, the concern is that we'll have a bunch of folks on the one end of the spectrum, one way or the other, show up. And if that's all the feedback we get from the community, it's not gonna be that helpful overall for us to make an informed decision.
It is still our decision, and I think we.
Absolutely.
It's our decision, right?
But thinking about this conversation about what we're, what we're expecting from the community.
Right.
It's like, we have to be realistic about what we're setting up in terms of what we're gonna get for feedback, if anything. Um, and whether or not it's actually gonna be useful in terms of informing us as a board on the community overall.
Yeah, Lisa?
Um, Mike did mention some kind of system for community feedback prior to when the board interviews the candidates.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, I think there's something more specific that we will bring on the twenty third about that. And I think.
Maybe you've been sending out before, so we, nobody looks like it, that would be helpful.
Yeah, if.
Well, and, and I think the, the issue is you wouldn't wanna ask people to come and then not ask them what they thought, no matter who they were that came.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that was what we was, were trying to figure out, is they're coming to.
Right. How do we get.
How do we get back that, no, no matter what the representation.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Right, we have members on the search committee and, um.
And I think Mike.
Right, and I think, I thi- I feel confident that on the twenty third, we'll come back with some sort of a one-list plan.
Good.
Good.
What do you think?
I think so.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Uh, in that end, and the, my next thing on my list is where Becky was going. I would like the people on the board to think about a question they would like to ask during this interview process and please send them to me, so that I could incorporate them in, so that we're fairly structured when we ask our questions during the interviews.
Okay.
Yeah, so, kind of, what I'm hearing, you know, I got a question for you to bring to Mike, uh, you know, and, you know, community feedback, how do we get that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how do we structure the community engagement, so it's both, so people feel that they have adequate time with the candidates, but we also don't leave people in a position where, you know, they have to take three and a half, four hours out of the day to feel that they got to see all, all, assuming we have three candidates, three candidates. Um, and then an orderly thorough process for questioning, which I think is, and I think Becky, that's gonna be a little bit. I think for us, that's gonna be easy to achieve. I think telling the public what they can and cannot ask is not gonna go over well.
I just don't know how to have an equitable interviewing process without some sort of.
Yeah.
But I hope Mike, I'm sure Mike's done this before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He'll have some conditions on that.
I think they'll have a plan for how to manage the community input.
Yes, but remember there are people who are gonna wanna ask their own questions at this community, so.
Yep.
That is.
Especially this community, that's right.
Yes.
And they're, they're not technically, they're not interviewing the people.
No, it's feedback, it's just community, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, so.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a caveat, but.
But, but they, they would, I think what we would have to do is, if, I think what we would have to do is probably the index card thing, so that it's the board that's managing the questions. And we would have to give all of the finalists the opportunity to answer each question.
Yeah.
And that's what would make it equitable, so that we don't have individuals from the public addressing specific questions to specific candidates. But here we have a question from the public, could each of you please respond?
That's a good idea.
Well, and in all fairness, there may be different questions we're gonna wanna ask different candidates, like.
Depending upon their background.
You know, it began in the background, you know, if we have an out-of-state candidate, there might be a question about, you know, what do you know about Vermont? Why do you wanna?
Do you know what you're getting into?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Sounds like you've covered that ground well, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, both of you, for doing this, if that is a big time commitment, um, it'd be appreciated greatly.
I can say I think we're very impressed with the person you hired to do the search.
To Mike, yes.
Mike's doing a good job.
Excellent.
It's good to know.
Uh, so moving on to item seven, which I think we may have to, uh, unfortunately neither Bridget or Steve are here and they have been working on, uh, three major aspects of this, so.
It's funny, Jim, I'd emailed Bridget about ten o'clock this morning. So, I was, I missed the last policy committee meeting, 'cause I was in interviews for the C and T director position, on which they were discussing those two items. And it's like, well, what's the plan tonight? They weren't in the package, are you bringing handouts? You're planning on presenting something, what, how was the structure for this discussion? So, I actually don't know, she didn't get back to us, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Steve's indication was we should punt on a lot of this, I know we've done this previously. I, I do kinda wanna set up, I think, what we need to do and obviously, you know, this is, I, this is, this is a big piece. I think this would be our biggest piece if we didn't have other pieces that, that we're also focusing on.
We're, we're getting those other ones squared really quickly, so.
Yeah, uh, so I just kinda wanna use a little time to remind people, you know, about the, the day we spent with, with Steve Dale and kind of, I think, where we need to, uh, to go and to, you know, go starting this summer. Mission, a vision, and ends, and that's another community process. Uh, so I think early on, and I think we can work with the new superintendents on this, get a public process, engagement process, to get those two things going. Uh, and then I was, we could go, but I, I think it would be good to have a series of discussions about board governance and board structure and, uh, board decorum, et cetera. And maybe either build that into some of our meetings over the summer, where we just kind of, you know, take part of a meeting and, and do a topic, we might wanna consider getting some sort of facilitator, uh, to help with that. And just, you know, iron out the three or four things we need to go through and really make that kind of our summer project and maybe wrap it up with a retreat in August where we finalize a lot of the work and get, get those pieces in place. Uh, you know, going, you know, going into the, the twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. So, that's kind of my overall thought. I think we need to probably really set that timetable, uh, either like the seventh or the twentieth of June. Um, and it might be a really good thing to be ready to pounce on after, you know, the fourth or fifth, when we, we make a new hire and really bring the new superintendent into that process. Uh, so that's kind of my high-level thought on that, uh, you know, given that we can't talk about some of these items that, that's, are in Steve and Bridget's head and, uh, we'll need to, to talk about later. So, I don't know if people.
And I like the idea of having devoted time again to talk through this stuff and get, get it taken care of. But I'm a little bit concerned pushing it off all the way into the summer, because we're talking about the budgeting policy, annual planning policy. We'll be well into, we're not talking about this until August, maybe getting it confirmed and, um, voted on in September. We're into the budget cycle already.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think there's, I think we're gonna have to prioritize and hope, you know, hopefully get, I think the, you know, the, the two top items here are probably things we should try to wrap up in June or early July if we can. Uh, and then we can work on some other things, like really refining what our governance structure looks like, what, you know. Governance by policy instead of policy governance means.
Right.
Uh, you know, things like, you know, board decorum, uh, you know, et cetera. Another big piece we're gonna talk about next is, uh, superintendent evaluation process. I think that's, you know, budget process, superintendent evaluation process, and annual, uh, just our annual planning. Are things we really need to.
Our powers.
Those are our responsibilities.
Yeah, yeah, need to get moving on soon. Uh, you know, and, and the mission and ends, but I think that's something we can build in, yeah.
Build in once we're kind of running with the new SI, yeah.
So, we're not gonna talk about these policies now, right, is what you're saying?
Yes, 'cause we, we, we just can't have a meaningful discussion without, without.
I missed the last round of drafts. The annual planning policy, I can just give you a rough update, it's still pretty rough. Um, I think we were really hoping to have a broad discussion before Steve spent any more time on that one, just because it could go a bunch of different directions. Um, the budget policy has been, I think, a little bit more refined, it's gone through a couple of drafts, it's had some feedback from administrators. Um, so the budget policy draft is probably in a much more better position to have a meaningful conversation rather than the annual planning policy. But, like, I missed, I was in the last planning committee, the policy committee, so I can't speak with exactly what Stephen Bridget had said, so.
May I ask you a question about the budgeting policy?
Lisa.
It, you've got, the action of the board will be to approve an overall percent change in the district's education spending. If the spending is, education spending is defined as the stable budget for local residents. My question about this policy, I was just asking this, so you could ha- talk about it, was in the process where is that? Um, and the reason I'm asking is I often feel like it's.
So, is this the?
It's, it's the next page after the code of conduct, we stapled it with it.
So, we did get, so the budget policy did get in, okay. I had a question about that too, so I'm not su- I have it, I, yes.
Okay. I was going.
I don't know how Steve.
I'll just express that, um, I've always found it hard to give anybody, uh, a percentage or anything
Anybody's feedbacks. Right.
until I know what you need. So, if the, I'm not opposed to doing that, but if the, you had a whole bunch of, a list of things that would happen, if that happened ahead of time and then you said to the board, give them these factors, what do you think? I'd be better able to do that.
Right, because technically the board approves a dollar amount budget.
Right.
In the end.
And we made, and yeah, we made that motion, um, you know, sort of, I had made, the last draft that I had seen on this, I had made that same note to ask Steve.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I'm not sure how they fleshed that out, or, right, but.
We can put it on here, Jim, thanks.
It would be great to have a timeline in this policy, so.
Yeah.
So, I think that's gonna, that goes into the annual planning policy also.
In the plan.
Yeah.
So, there's some overlap between the two, and it's been discussed and kind of how to make those not be redundant and, right.
Yeah. How to write the line up, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's definitely to make sure that the, essentially the board didn't, it could be received in a timely fashion, so it's all, here's the closed budget now.
Right. We really, the board would really benefit from, um, procedures. I know this is a policy, but I think we would really benefit from procedures.
And the timeline would have.
Device attached, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I also agree we need that well before September.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're already midway through May, yes.
It's getting along, right.
So, are we, uh, ready to move on to eight? So, one of, uh, one of the most important things, I think, the board function is, is superintendent evaluation. And I know we've had somewhat of a, at least the, my pillar, uh, school board has had, you know, kind of an up and down history with that, just in terms of actually having a process in place and my understanding is somebody's actually really, really doing it much at all. Um, I think it's really important, we have a clear and consistent and effective superintendent evaluation process that starts with the new superintendent, um, that perhaps we can, at least at the initial stages, help the new superintendent build. But kind of the major things that I have on my list for, well, well, here's kind of my, here's some thoughts I have on that. One, I think, I think we need an evaluation, uh, that's tasked with putting a timetable together, making sure the evaluation happens, making sure all the, the pieces come together, um, and, and just, you know, getting that going. So, you know, that means, you know, a committee and then a set process for that committee to follow.
Again, procedures with timeline.
Procedures with, with timelines, yeah.
Yes, actually, that's necessary.
I think part of that is a process that would involve the whole board, plus the superintendent of setting goals. That the superintendent would set goals, the board would also set goals for the superintendent, there would come, you know, there would be a, coming together an agreement of what, what those goals actually are. So, there's common agreed upon goals between the board and the superintendent about what, what the goals for the year are. And that would then be evaluated with some things I think we need to put together pretty soon, which is a job description. So, just kind of, what are the basic expectations, there's the yearly goals of the superintendent, but then just as a base level function, what, what do we expect of the superintendent, just in terms of doing her his job?
Essential functions.
Essential functions. And then also, you know, that can also, you know, for the new superintendent, I think that should be married to an entry plan, which is something we should also get together. And, you know, part of, part of that would also be in the contract, you know, what are they contractually obligated to do? What's their job description tell them to do? And then for the initial first year, you know, what's the entry plan, and then beyond that, it would be, be the goals. Uh, so just get clear expectations about what we're measuring, what we expect, uh, make sure those are upfront. Uh, you know, and then as, as the year progresses, I'd like a pretty aggressive review process, or at least thorough. Aggressive is the wrong word, but thorough and comprehensive review process. That the evaluation committee would be in charge of moving along, but obviously the board would be informed along the way. And kind of, you know, the three main pieces that I would love to see as kind of part of like a three sixty review are, I think there should be one or two opportunities during the year where the evaluation committee meets one-on-one, and I've done this in nonprofit boards, it's very effective, with the leadership team and just gets feedback on how things are going.
Yeah.
And I think that does a couple things, you know. It, it gives the board a lot of information, and, and it, you know, the board's hearing from the superintendent, I think it's good to hear from people immediately supervised and superintendent, what's working, what's not. I think it creates a level of transparency and honesty, and gives the board different perspectives. I also think it gives planned and meaningful opportunities for the immediate leadership to be, to be heard by the board in a way that will make them feel that the board is listening to them, and there, you know, there's a check-in point, and the check-in point is very defined. The other piece is, which I think we're doing and we're getting up, is, you know, kind of non-leadership team, like Survey Monkey, where we, we send a survey out and we get comments back in.
Yeah.
And then, the third piece, which I think is trickier, but what I still would like to do is some sort of community input and parental input. Which I think we'd have to take with a bit of grain of salt, because it's going to be probably the most self-selecting of the three processes, you know. There's going to be a lot of people who aren't going to take the time for it, there are going to be people who are always going to take the time for it. But I think it's still valuable, and I think it's good to have the community given an opportunity. And then, you know, use that information, you know, look at the goals, look at the job description, look at the entry plan, and, you know, sit down and just have a really constructive conversation, you know, at the end of the year with the superintendent about how she's doing, or how he's doing. And then we start the process over, and just make sure that that, you know, think about that as that and the budget being really the two most important things the board does.
Makes sense.
So, and then following that, we have, we have, Nancy Reed has volunteered to help at least get a process in place, and get some of these things going over the next month or so. With, you know, volunteers for this board, if they're willing. Nancy's on the other board, who'd be serving as a community member, which I think we could do. There's a little bit of awkwardness there. I don't know how people feel about it, I also, the, the plus side is, she's got the time, and she has a strong education background. So I just wanted to throw that offer out there, get people's thoughts. Otherwise, one of us could, could step up and do that, I know, session's open, Peter.
I think, I mean, the committee would need a charge, and it would need a defined membership, and...
Exactly.
Jim, do you know, I feel like at some point on the BSBA website, I've seen, one of the services they provide is superintendent evaluation. Have you had any conversations with them to see?
I've had some, and it's definitely something they'd be willing to help us on. So we can, we can look to it quickly, I, I can look to it more. I, I do think, I would like to at least be pretty, I don't want to say deep into the process, but I would like this to look, I would like this to go hand-in-hand with the new superintendent hire, so... It looks like, not that it just looks like, but it is, that, you know, with the new superintendent, we're going to bring a consistent process, and it's not going to come in...
And realize things.
Yeah, after, you know, she or he has been established for a while, so it's kind of like, whoa, wait a second, what is this? I want the expectation to be pretty clear, that we're going to have...
The entry plan, and...
You know, we're going to have an entry plan, we're going to have a comprehensive evaluation process, we're going to stick to it. It's, you know, it's not about, you know, we're not imposing something on, you have, you've been here a while. This is how we expect, you know, our relationship to be.
Jim? Yeah. So, having just heard about this, and this isn't against Nancy or anything, some reason it's not clicking in my head that Nancy, it might seem weird to have someone from another board helping guide. I just want a moment to think about it, do we have to okay it now?
No, we definitely don't, I just wanted to throw it out there, we can talk about it.
Can we have, before any actions, think we, I don't know, it just doesn't seem right to me, and it probably is okay, but it seems weird.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally fine with it, I just wanted to, you know, Nancy volunteered, I wanted to throw it out there.
Sure, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
You know, she brought it up, she says, you know, if the board feels it's weird, she's not going to be, you know, put off at all.
Well, it certainly needs people from this board on it anyway.
It definitely needs people from this board.
This board, not...
This board.
This board, yes, this board.
That's the difference.
This board would need to create a charge and define the membership, and then if Nancy were to represent, to be on it as a community member.
You would be willing to.
Yeah.
But would we have community members on a superintendent evaluation committee, is the question.
Well, I don't think it would be a superintendent evaluation, it would be a committee to set a process, and help with some of these documents. And then, and then the...
This would be, maybe this is a committee to help write this.
Write the charge.
Then you would have another committee that would carry it out, which would be consistent people on this board and no one else.
Yeah, or we could skip that stuff altogether, and go straight to superintendent evaluation.
Let's just think about that for a minute.
Yeah, so I just wanted to throw this out there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
This is, this is ideas, but I, I do want us, as we move into June...
Right.
I mean, I'd like to have, you know, this is, that's what I'd like to put off till like August, or July, or, you know, September. I'd like to have...
It starts thirty days in, if you're going to do it right.
Yes.
If I can just say that, I'd like to just say, we're making this real complicated. And there are established procedures, previous procedures, and we're going to start it.
I was just going, like, do you get it, is that right?
Okay, so, guys, we're having a lot of...
Side conversations.
Yeah, so go ahead, thank you.
I was saying that there are established procedures in place to do a good job at this. We're making it really, really complicated, and I don't think it really, really is. And having a new person come into a position like this, embedding them, embedded part of the team, part of the district, has to start immediately, actually. And when you bring someone on board like this, as you were calling it, the entry process, it's thirty, sixty, ninety, then quarterly, then annual, I mean, they'll, almost like, when you're a full year out, it's almost too late to do an evaluation. It needs to be a tenuous process. And I think we're making it really, really complicated, when I'm not sure, sure it should be.
How would you propose we get there?
Well, we, we're handicapped, that we have not done a good job at this so far.
Right.
Perhaps if BSBA actually has a process in place, or I have timelines in place for my own work. There are established procedures in place, as you bring on a new hospital administrator, or a new school superintendent. It's not like, we're, we're not creating the wheel here, if I can just put it that way.
We just, right, but we just haven't done it, so somehow, somebody has to do it, is what we're saying.
I don't know why we can't adopt it from another school district that's already done it. There has to be places out, I know, in a separate search I did, there are superintendent job descriptions out there that are easily brought in, and has a draft, and can be edited and updated, I mean, for...
And can the policy committee just, I mean, to me, the, the, when we were talking about it earlier, the, and Brian quite rightly observed that the budget process, the planning process, and the superintendent evaluation process are like our three main jobs, and they kind of all go together.
I think, I think the policy committee's under a lot of stress.
Well, I know they are, but maybe they need more help or something, but that seems like, and maybe Becky has resources at hand to offer them, that would help.
I think, I also think that Nancy had talked to Mike and several other people for samples of process that I'm sure she'd be glad to give, whoever are going to look at it, so you don't start from zero.
Yeah, no, and that's, I agree, we don't start from zero, but we need, we need, people are kind of coming with ideas and do that research, and come up, yeah, and come up with that process, and, you know, come up with, with the job description, come up with the entry plan. I mean, I think it's all out there, but somebody needs to...
Or you like talking.
Go find it, no, I'm not talking, yeah, I'm just saying.
Isn't that something Mike's doing?
Maybe, maybe, I was thinking about the fact, so now we're going to meet again on the twenty-third, because we love meeting so much.
Yes.
And maybe if you think about all this, and on the twenty-third, we're more, we've, we've developed a plan, whatever the plan is, but we say, here's how we'll do it, and here's who will do it. Because otherwise, you're going to be into June, and you won't have started.
Would it be easier to react to a proposal than it would be to draft it from straw man? I think so, too. We need a, it, if I just put out there what I have to the, to this board, then you can react to it, update it, fix it, correct it, delete it, whatever, but you actually have a tool at least to look at, if that would be helpful.
Would you, would you have time, Becky, to check in with BSBA, and ask them if they have a model?
I'd be glad to.
And you could, you could compare their model with what you're used to working with, and...
I'd be happy to.
That would be awesome.
You're going to... Actually, I think, I had, I checked with it a while back, and they do have models on this, so I'll just pull it up and send it out. Okay.
Yeah, no, that would be super helpful.
Okay. You go ahead.
To be clear, then, we're not forming any committees right now, the intention is, in the future, we will have an evaluation committee. We're expecting on the twenty-third, we're going to have a rough draft of a...
Or at least some...
I would say, or something to work with. Or at least on the twenty-third, just decide what you're going to do, yeah, your process, and here, here, look at this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to a chair.
Second.
I'll second one.
All is a saver.
Hi.
Hi.
Cheers.
I'll take your blue.